I'd like to call Alexandria City Council meeting to order. Justice, would you be the role?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Lawson?
We pray first.
Well, we'll do it next. Mr. Silver? Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hobbs is absent. Mr. Marshall?
Father Paul, coming here this afternoon. We want your continued blessings and peace and being a God in this world. Again, well, thank you for being so good, being so kind. Thank you for walking today. Thank you for our help and strength. Our help, Father, gives us wisdom and knowledge to carry on this meeting in a way that you seek to. You bless me with some juice tonight.
Come here, please, please.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in wisdom, with liberty and justice for all.
We did the last one. This is that other one.
I, 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 I.
Economic development.
Um, this law. I read now, okay, resolution, uh, turn open meetings law, whereas the council of the city of Alexandria has been concerned with inquiries of the open meetings law set out. Louisiana revised statute forty-two dash five and has always recognized the meetings of the city council shall be open to the public unless closed pursuant to well-recognized exception and that the council, the decision shall be made in accordance with the statutes, the city charter and policy requirements. Be it therefore resolved, the city council of the city of Alexandria extends its attorney general of the state of Louisiana is represented together with the district attorney, Rappese Parish, an open invitation to address the city council in a public meeting on any concerns of dating the, uh, open meetings law that would benefit the city council, officers of staff and public citizens. Whereas this be further resolved and resolution be recorded in the minutes of the city council and a copy of transcript, uh, to the office of attorney general, Charles Foley, and to the office of the Rappese Parish attorney, uh, district attorney's name see downs by the city clerk. And the resolution is, uh, has to be declared and adopted on the fourteenth of August.
Move second. On the paper.
Aight.
Okay. Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
You have six yeas and one absent. He passes. Good. Okay.
Now, we go through the consent count. Ten and eleven, public work.
Mr. President, item number two needs to be delayed for two weeks.
Hold number five. Let the record reflect that I'm standing on number five and I think, uh...
Let the record reflect I'm standing also, number five.
It's only up the introduction.
I move. Second. Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Smith.
All in favor? Go to F.
Section F?
Yes.
This is... Ordnance upon adoption, subject to public hearing?
Number twenty, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bids submitted for water meters for a six-month period.
Move.
Sir.
Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Fowler.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aight.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Carries. Number twenty-one, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bids submitted for one thirty-seven-foot material handler bucket truck for the electric distribution department.
Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Smith. All in favor?
Aight.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number twenty-two, uh, it needs to be delayed for two weeks.
Move for delay.
Number twenty-three, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bids submitted for two vertical non-clogged dry pit sewage pumps for the wastewater department.
Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aight.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Twenty-four, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bids submitted for TASER electronic control devices and access accessories.
Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Question? All in favor?
Aight.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Twenty-five, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the lowest quote received for hot mix for a six-month period for use by various city departments.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Smith. All... Discussion? All in favor?
Aight.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Twenty-six, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept quotes received for the sale of surplus transformers, breakers, and regulators for the electric distribution substation.
Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Question? All in favor?
Aight.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Twenty-seven, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to renew the existing contract for transformer repairs for pole mount and pad mount transformers for the electric distribution department.
Second. Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Smith. Any question? All in favor?
Aight.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Twenty-eight, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the re- the mayor to renew the existing contract for testing, calibration, and maintenance of substation relays, meters, and related equipment for the electric distribution department.
Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor?
Aight.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Twenty-nine, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing change order number three for water well improvements for water well rehabilitation for seven well sites.
Sir.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Smith. Questions? All in favor?
Aight.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number thirty, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Louisiana Department of Cultural Recreation and Tourism Office of State Parks for the city to receive a state of progression of funds to benefit the Alexandria Zoo.
Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Lawson.
Please, uh, I think it's an end of piece, uh, but it's unaccepted back out. I think we need to leave acknowledge, uh, state, Louisiana gift that we receive and commend and all that. I hope that's reflected, uh...
Especially our local representatives and senators, uh, that have been actively doing this for us for a number of years. It's the proper time tonight if we could pass a resolution, uh, thanking all of those on behalf of the city.
Harry, expenses come, as you say, tell them to get a little bit more.
All in favor?
Aight.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thirty-one, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing change order number one for program C work task number six for Waverly and Windermere Boulevard concrete panel repairs.
Second.
Move by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Fowler. All in favor? Opposed?
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Thirty-two, to consider final adoption of an ordinance to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Arnold Bonnet Thompson Foundation during business as the Arnold Bonnet Thompson African American Museum and Cultural Arts Center and to provide a grant for the fiscal year oh-seven, oh-eight and other considerations related thereto in exchange for certain deliverables between and among the city, LSU A and Arnold Bonnet Thompson related to the needy for cultural and educational purposes.
Move. Sir.
Move by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Fowler. Any question? Discussion? All in favor?
Aight.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thirty-three, to consider final adoption of an ordinance amending the city of Alexandria retiree health premium effective October first, two thousand seven.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion? All in favor?
Aight.
Opposed?
Okay.
Okay.
No. No. Did you vote for?
No.
Okay. Okay, Lawson voted no. But it passed.
Motion carries.
Thirty-four, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the city council to enter into a professional services contract with John W. Scott and a professional services contract with Tony Martin to provide legal advice, counsel, and services to the Alex- Alexandria City Council related to the Alexandria Home Rule Charter, the Louisiana Open Meetings Law, to legal affairs of the city and matters before the city council, to litigation and/or investigations related to or involving the city, to the Cleco lawsuit and its settlement and other matters including compliance with local, state, and federal law, reports and fact gathering on legal matters pertinent to the city council, its responsibilities and deliberations, and general legal services.
Second.
Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Johnson.
President, uh...
All in discussion?
President, could the administration be heard on that matter?
Uh, I'd like to also say, I'd like to, you go ahead.
Well, on behalf of the administration, gentlemen, the, uh, city attorney's office would like to voice our opposition to this ordinance that, uh, has been introduced. We believe that it violates section four oh-two of the charter. We also believe it's in contravention to the existing case law specifically, um, uh, incited the media particularly by Mr. Lawson, Roy V. Humphreys. So the public can have better understanding of that case, let me just give you a little bit of background. That case was decided in nineteen eighty-four here in Alexandria, was, uh, affirmed by the Third Circuit in that same year. In that case, there was actual litigation between the mayor and the city council. The mayor, at that time, John K. Snyder refused to enforce the provisions of a power contract that the council had entered into during the administration of the previous mayor. The council passed a resolution ordering the mayor to follow the terms of the contract. He then refused, so they hired Mr. Humphreys, who then filed suit against, um, the mayor, Mr. Snyder, to make him follow the terms of the contract. In this particular case, the court said that the city council could have their own counsel because there was a, quote, "extreme necessity" which existed in connection with the city council's hiring a special counsel. Today, as we stand here now, there is no extreme necessity. There's no litigation between the council and the mayor, there's no dispute, there's no legal conflict of any kind. We believe that the contract as written is invalid, it's unenforceable, and it's in contravention of the city charter. The way that it's actually worded, it would actually give Mr. Scott more authority than I have. He could, uh, basically overrule any opinion that I gave the city council on a legal matter. I think it's disastrous from a policy standpoint. It would make the continuity of the city's legal affairs impossible to maintain. As we stand today, there are no lawyers, and Mr. Gibbs can, uh, recognize this point also, that in the history of the city, there's never been a case like this where the city had a quote-unquote "general counsel" where they could, uh, receive opinions from an outside lawyer independent of the city attorney's office. The public meetings dispute, which we just referred to in that resolution, was resolved by myself and Mr. Gibbs. I did all of the negotiations with the district attorney and with the attorney general. I have dual responsibility under the charter, which is why I did that. I had to defend the council as mandated by section four oh-two. And, uh, Mr. Gibbs assisted me in that. He actually drafted the ordinance itself. Gentlemen, I just think that this is a bad idea. I, I, I would ask you to reconsider. I know that there have been personality conflicts between the administration and some members of the council in the past, but I don't think that any of y'all can say that we've ever given you legal advice which we knew to be incorrect. The top three people in this administration are all lawyers. Every time we take a public stance on an issue, we do so with legal authority. I think it's a bad idea, and I would ask y'all to not pass this. I think Mr. Gibbs also had some comments.
Um, Mr. Fowler, then, Mr. Silver?
Let Mr. Gibbs go ahead and then I'll...
Mr. Marshall, uh, I think the first thing I need to point out to you, um, is that the instrument read, uh, is the original instrument that I think Mr. Scott drafted. I understand that y'all are considering a substitute, uh, but just so you understand, what y'all are moved, what has been moved was what was introduced two weeks ago. It was the draft Mr. Scott prepared. And I looked at the draft. The draft that's being considered is not within the structure and organization of the city of Alexandria. It does not provide that the city council can retain separate counsel. The specific statutes in our, which is in our charter, talks about the city attorney being the chief legal advisor to the city. It does allow the city to hire a, um, special attorney for circumstances, but it's talking about an attorney that has a special field of expertise, the labor lawyer, the environmental lawyer, and those have been done in the past. There is no provision in the charter which would allow the, the city council to retain a separate employed attorney. There's nothing prohibiting council members as individuals from retaining Mr. Scott, but this would have to be done by you as individuals paid for with your own patrimony. And you may choose to do that, and there certainly nothing that prohibits you as individuals from retaining Mr. Scott. But the council as a constituent of the city is not alone, the city, and the city is represented under our organic law, the charter, by the, uh, by the city attorney and by those attorneys that are assistant city attorneys. That's it in a nutshell, I think, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Fowler?
As Mr. Gibbs said, uh, each of us is allowed to retain or seek legal counsel from an attorney of our own choosing if we wish to do so. In that vein, I did so with the previous, uh, uh, introduction, which was two weeks ago. This, as Mr. Gibbs said, is a totally different ordinance, a complete replacement, which I have not had time to review. The attorney that I chose, uh, had some expertise in this area, and that he's Judge Humphreys. He was the Humphreys in the Roy versus Humphreys. He's also a very good friend of mine. He affirmed that, that as it was originally written, uh, it would be a total violation of the, uh, of charter, and, and he didn't see where it would be appropriate for us to do so. If we're considering doing this and enacting it tonight, I intend to vote against it, but I would pray that this council would give me a chance to, uh, seek again an opinion, uh, from Judge Humphreys, uh, on the newly written. I'm, I'm opposed to it and will remain opposed to it. I have not sought any legal advice from our staff of attorneys, that I have not gotten adequate and very professional, uh, advice from and have complete comfort with it. Mr. Scott is a personal friend of mine, and, and he's a very good attorney, and has represented several friends of mine, and he's an outstanding attorney, but that's not the case here. I think it simply does not apply. Thank you.
What do we have in that time? Silver?
Two things, if there's going to be another, uh, resolution introduced, ordinance introduced, this may be a moot question, therefore what I'm saying may be unnecessary, and this, everything should be on hold, but I, I look at it this way. Number one, we did pass something this evening that disavowed us from, um, the attorney general. So I think that is where a lot of this emulated and emanated, and I feel that that has been resolved. Secondly, I have the utmost respect for both Mr. Scott and Ms. Martin, uh, so that has no bearing on it. I also share the same amount of respect for a fellow named, uh, what was it called, named, former... Former lawyer for the city. Kelvin Sanders. He had lots of opposition, but I supported him wholeheartedly. I share the same optimism and cooperation spirit with Mr. Johnson, especially, uh, Mr. Mr. Trey Gibbs, because he's probably as knowledgeable as anybody in the city as to what makes us click. With this in mind, it's easy to tear down what we've tried to work on over a period of years, and I would like everyone to sort of sit down, let the dust clear, and put everything on hold, and let's go forward and do what we did earlier this evening, accomplish a lot, and continue to do so. I would therefore vote against this, this particular resolution. Thank you very much.
I have a mandatory ordinance, uh, list, uh, nice, uh, president. So ordinance authorized the city council to...
Order to, uh, ordinance authorizing the city council to enter into a professional service contract with John W. Scott and a professional service contract with Ms. Toni Martin to provide legal service, counsel, and services to the Alexandria City Council related to the Alexandria Home Rule Charter, the Louisiana Open Me- Meetings Law, to legal affairs of the city of Alexandria, to matters before the city council, to litigation and/or investigation related to or involving the city of Alexandria, including the status of settlement, negotiations, and other matters including compliance with local, state, and federal laws, reports, fact, fact gathering, legal matters pertinent to the city council, its responsibilities and deliberations, and general legal services. Whereas the city council recognizes the city attorney as the chief legal advisor to the city of Alexandria, and to that end, the city council will continue to seek and welcome legal services from the city attorney as primary source, and that services of the city council special counsel will not supplant, uh, the city attorney and the legal department. The city council is in need from time to time on an ongoing basis of independent and additional legal advice, consultation, and services. Whereas municipal government, government provided by the city of Alexandria Home Rule Charter is a mere council form of government, which consists of elected city council that could, that constitutes the legislative branch in the government, the elected mayor who is also the chief elected office. Whereas the city charter states that all powers of the city shall be vested in the city council, except where otherwise provided by law or by the charter, and the council has a responsibility to provide for and exercise thereof a performance of all duties and obligations of the city by law, that the retention of special counsel is entirely consistent with well-established principles relative to the separations of powers in our democratic government. Whereas it's within the province of the city council to determine the necessity of special counsel and the duration of employment. Whereas independent, well-informed legislative body is always in the best interest of the community and particularly essential for the purpose set forth herein above, that the city council is in need of special counsel to assist the council with legal matters which may arise from time to time and prompt advice needed on short time where it would be inappropriate for the law department to render the same. And, uh, that's the body of, but the ordinance concludes, uh, now therefore, the city of Alexandria council is hereby authorized to enter into a professional service contract with John W. Scott and a professional service contract with Toni Martin to provide legal advice, counsel services to the Alexandria City Council, including and exclusively matters related to the city home rule charter and to the open meetings law, to assist the council by legal review and advice to assure that the separation of powers between the executive and legislative branches are maintained, to provide for full review and disclosure of the law and facts to be provided on all matters before the council, so that in any and all conflicts of interest and pertinent legal issues be identified and disclosed, and assure and provide that there be full compliance with the city charter and applicable laws in matters presented to or action on the city council, to maintain a knowledge and awareness of litigation and contracts affecting the city of Alexandria, Alexandria and litigation to which the city is a party thereto, in order to assure the city council is knowledgeable and well-informed, and to provide appropriate legal services to enforce the same. The city Alexandria, uh, city Alexandria council hereby authorizes President Everett Hobbs on behalf of the city Alexandria council to execute a professional service contract with John Scott and Toni Williams for the purposes set forth herein and to effect each said contract. I move.
Substitute.
Second.
Mr. Gibbs, would you, um, come forward, please? One sec.
Oh, 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 hold it, Mr. Johnson. This is city council speak. I'm presiding.
Could I speak, please, Mr. President?
But I, I'd like, I'd like to also say something while we're going on.
I'll speak, please, Mr. President.
You don't tell me when to speak.
I'm asking you to speak, sir.
I, I want to say this to you, and as to why I feel we need to have another council. We were, this council sued by a Klansman. I have to yet to hear from you.
Sued by a Klansman?
Legal, legal documents? Didn't he file legal documents with the attorney general?
Sir, I'm the person who resolved that matter. The reason why...
But the thing about it was, Mr. Johnson, I got the floor. I'm talking. I'm talking, Mr. Johnson.
Speak.
Bottom line is, you did not come to this council when it was all said and done and brought up to us and said what was happening.
I spoke to everyone involved, sir.
You didn't speak to me.
Well...
You didn't speak to me, Mr. Johnson.
The reason why there's no injunction, the reason why there's no lawsuit filed by the attorney general is because I represented the council, sir. Mr. Scott played no role whatsoever in that matter, and Mr. Gibbs can tell you that if you...
Can, can we clarify something as a point of order? You say this has been resolved. Is this over with, is what you're saying?
The public meetings inquiry is over.
But is it over with, this entire situation, the ethics, uh, charge? Resolved, I mean, it's eradicated, completely done with. Is this completely, can you tell the public, if you say you resolved it, then we have no other actions that we're required to take?
There will be no litigation against this, this council by the district attorney or by the attorney general on the...
To make it simple, is it closed? Is it closed?
Can I finish? Will you let me speak? Will you give? Can I speak?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. There will be no litigation against this council from the district attorney's office or from the attorney general relating to the public meetings issue.
Mr. Lawson?
Is it closed?
Yes, it's settled.
Where's the documentation?
Well, when the resolution gets to the attorney general, they, they have to see the resolution first, Mr. Lawson.
So that's not closed?
It has to be passed first.
So it's not closed?
It's been passed.
Okay, where's the documentation that says if this is passed? Show me that.
I can, Mr. Lawson, the, the attorney general asked me to provide them with a copy of the resolution. Once he found, once he got that, he would close the file.
Anybody aware of that?
No.
Okay.
I will not allow...
I'll call for the question.
I ask...
You have to vote in.
Not away. Okay, you got the, uh, all in favor of amendment?
Could I finish, Mr. Marshall?
Opposed?
Could I finish, sir?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes, for substitute.
You're following amendment?
Amendment.
Mr. Silver?
Opposed.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Four yeas, two nays, one absent, and the ordinance passes.
Hold on, amendment, amendment.
Your motion has been...
Now.
So move on to...
I move on to...
It's been moved by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. Johnson.
Roll call.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
I'm opposed.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
No.
Four yeas, two nays, one absent, and the rest ordinance passes. Number thirty-five, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of fifteen-foot wide sanitary sewer servitude being granted by the Alexandria Housing Authority.
Move, second. Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Johnson. Question? All in favor? Told.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
To consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of the subdivision plaque for England Drive subdivision for lots one through forty-three.
Move by Mr. Fowler. Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Smith.
Any questions?
Uh, discussion. All in favor? Told.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Committees.
Now committees?
Finance Committee, Mr. Lawson. Mr. Lawson. Finance Committee.
Public Works Committee, Mr. Silver. Yeah, ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a twenty oh seven urban and community forestry grant from the Louisiana Department of Agriculture and Forestry. That was approved. That's all.
Is that it? Lego Committee, Mr. Smith.
Okay, I have a resolution, a resolution authorized city, uh, to cooperate with the Rapid East Fair School Board for replacement of the fence at UVA High School. I so move.
Second, second.
All in favor? Okay, I have another one, uh, an ordinance authorizing mayor into, uh, intergovernmental agreement with the Ninth District, District Court. I, uh, I move for an introduction of, uh, need a second.
Second, you want to send that to the league?
Yeah.
What about the person? You send that to the league, it'll probably work.
That's the resolution.
Oh, it's a resolution, okay. I'm sorry.
All right, I, I have another resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Comer Jr. down into the Alexandria City Service, uh, Commission. I so move.
Second.
All in...
All in favor?
All in. Okay, I have a introduction to an ordinance adding, uh, section fifteen dash eight to Alexandria Court of Commerce related to appropriate dressing for persons in certain public places to prohibit public exposure and certain attire, to provide for fines and civil penalties and related, uh, matter. I move the introduction.
Second, you want to send it to the league?
Yes, I do.
Uh, just want to be sure that that's gender neutral.
Huh? All right. Next one, I have an ordinance authorizing mayor to enter into a professional service agreement with Christian Wemble for law clerk service. I move the introduction and send it to the league. Need a second.
Second. I'm sorry.
Ordinance, is that all?
You don't send it to the committee?
Yeah, it's going to late, back to legal.
Okay.
So we honor...
Contract. Okay, that's all.
Okay, Utility Committee, Mr. Fowler?
Now, for those that didn't see it, we had a, a very nice report from Mr. Camella tonight on different ways that she might save utilities, uh, about less consumption. Uh, we're gonna have that on Channel Four at, uh, as quickly as we can, and hopefully it will benefit some folks. I think that's been...
Community Development, Mr. Marshall?
No report.
Personnel Insurance, Mr. Johnson?
No report.
Public Safety, Mr. Marshall?
No report.
Any review, Mr. Fowler?
No report.
Economic Development, Mr. Lawson?
Yes, I have, uh, introduction of an ordinance honoring, uh, authorizing there to a cooperative agreement with, we have wrote a still, uh, agreement that says, uh, since we're gonna have reunion, uh, at the... Had to look at trees, did I have reunion? Had a rod reunion. Uh, regarding, uh, in event September one, two thousand and seven, and, uh, related agreement with Convention of Liberty Bureau, provided with respect there to... Sorry. Another resolution, uh, memorializing the citizens into, uh, enter into a certain cooperative agreement, uh, government agreements with Attache Transport System, America Limited, Attache Power Systems, America Limited, Art's the Redness Union Pacific Railroad, Shaw Group, uh, Biggie Crane, and Great Company, the Louisiana Regional Court Authority, EDS. Uh, move.
Second.
That's the resolution, you take a vote.
Second.
All in favor?
The ordinance authorizing mayor into a multiple cooperative, uh, economic development agreements with certain parties for the purpose of accepting, transferring, donations regarding upgrades to the City of Alexandria, existing rail spur, the Ford of, uh, Alexandria provided ancillary manage, and contract related thereto.
Second.
That was just the introduction.
I want to, uh, ask the mayor, uh, make a comment on, before, maybe Greg, I mean, I know what the zoo means, and you just give a little comment, uh...
I just wanted to suggest, as you all acknowledge, the legislative delegation for their gift, that, that when you do, that you ask their new representatives, several of these seats are turning over, to please consider that, you know, continuing that tradition.
Glad you reminded us. We had, we had stated earlier, we wanted to pass a re- resolution, like, to that effect.
You move, and I second. Start to disagree. Prove a resolution, uh...
Resolution, uh, thanking, uh, all of our local representatives and Senator MacPherson for their help, uh, with Alexandria Zoo and, uh, continued funding from the state, uh, to be worded, however.
I second.
All in favor?
All in.
Told. Thank you for reminding us. We talked about it earlier, but we failed to act on it.
On the zoo, just to let everybody know that, first, I just want to thank Les Wit, who's our zoo director, who does a great job. He's, he works outside the scope of things, uh, just for the zoo quite often. Probably shouldn't have said that.
That may be an understatement.
But, but Les does a tremendous job for the city. Uh, he in, recently introduced zoovies, uh, which are, uh, film that is show, uh, movies that are shown at the zoo on a big screen. It's a little hot right now. We've got some cooling fans that are out there. It's gonna get better, but there was, uh, a little over a hundred people at the, the Maiden Boys, the first one, the other day. Uh, I do expect that they'll get better. We're gonna, uh, make sure that they're cooler as we move into, uh, fall. I think they're gonna be really nice. I called him from, I was on a trip somewhere, and I saw him doing it in a little village, and I called and said, "Les, we need to get this." And he said, he, as he always does, he was very nice, and said, "Oh, it sounds like a great idea, mayor." I said, "Well, how do you think we'll go about getting the equipment?" He said, "Well, I purchased it three months ago." So, that tells you how kinda on the spot he is. Uh, and then, secondly, I want to let everybody know, in follow-up to the, uh, uh, minority business program that we introduced a few weeks back, we're coming down with an ordinance on that. Uh, there was a piece I talked about last time that I didn't go into great detail about that you may recall. It was the small business and minority business bonding program to allow people who otherwise have been shut out of bonding situations, uh, through institutional reasons or whatever, uh, to have an opportunity to do that. We're meeting with the attorney general's office tomorrow on how to institute that program here, and we expect, uh, that something will come down. Ms. Elena Meyer, one of the assistant city attorneys, is working on that. So just to let you know, in follow-up, that's what's going on with that program. The bonding piece will be very important to people who otherwise are able to do things, uh, but because of their inability to get bonding, uh, have not been able to. Thank you, that's all.
Move by adjournment. Move, second. Move, be adjourned.
[inaudible].[1654.13]